I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
And to the republic.
Which it stands, one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice.
Justice for all. Okay, thank you. Hey Linda. Okay, welcome everybody to the April 28th meeting of the Town of Andover Board of Finance. We do have a lot to cover today, so this could go long, but we'll see what we can get done in the time we have. We'll make the time available, I guess. Our first agenda item is public speak. I just want to again remind everybody as we often do during these meetings to try to keep it concise to the point. And if needed, we'd like to limit it about three minutes. If needed, we can always come back to you if you have more you'd like to say. And also, as usual, try not to, you know, reiterate too much somebody else has said. Just say, you know, I agree with, you know, that person and try to keep it efficient. We will have another public speak opportunity at the end of the meeting. Okay, Amanda, do you want to go around and see if anybody has any comments?
Yes, okay, first up, we have Kathy Palazzi and Mike Palazzi.
I'm all set, my mic's all set.
All right, thank you. Valerie Bruno.
Thank you Amanda, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Carol Lee.
All set, thank you.
Georgette Conrad.
For once, I have nothing to say.
Thanks for being here. All right, next up Jeff McGuire.
I'm all set, thank you Amanda.
Thanks Jeff. And last but not least, Dan Foran.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, no public speak.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. We will move on to agenda item number three. This is the opportunity where we have, we have the opportunity here to add and delete items from the agenda. Do any of the board members have any suggestions for additions or deletions of the agenda? Eric, are you aware of any other business we should be dealing with that's not on the agenda? Okay, Eric's not shaking his head, no. Okay, hearing none, let's move along to item number four. This is to discuss and act upon the budget. So there's some things we need to talk about here. Some things have changed since we had our public hearing last week. So the agenda item A1 is to discuss feedback from the public hearing. I think all the members, board members who were in attendance and heard basically what the comments were from that meeting. Was there any other feedback that we received, anyone has that they want to discuss? Okay. Item number four, A2, state legislature municipal funding decrease. Eric, do you want to give us a summary of that, please?
Sure, Amanda, can I share my screen?
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so you should be looking at a table which says estimated town ECS grants for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. So, the, as most of you know, the state has not adopted a budget yet. The governor proposed essentially level funding in the same ECS formula as last year. However, the Legislative Appropriations Committee has proposed increasing the overall appropriation, but revising the ECS formula. So the long and the short of it is if you look at the first pink column under FY 2022, they're predicting a ECS grant to the town of Andover, 1,936,854, which is a decrease of $67,928 in revenue to the town of Andover. Now, this is not final because the budget is not passed. And one of the questions is since they did it at such a late date and most towns have already pretty far along in their budgeting process, would they consider a hold harmless for the towns that are getting reduced? And I had along, it was a subject of discussion, you know, at the CROG Policy Board Meeting today. And we spoke to our, you know, the CROGS lobbyist. And the lobbyist indicated she did not think, nor did, you know, Representative Nunez, who is on the Appropriations Committee, did not think they were going to, they're not really even discussing seriously a hold harmless. So both of them were pretty sure that this is likely to hold throughout the budget process. But again, there's no adopted state budget. So the best, the best number we have is that compared to the budget we presented a week ago today, our revenue will be decreased by $67,928.
Okay, thank you Eric. So the, just to clarify, hopefully everyone understood that. But the, there was some discussion of what Eric called a hold harmless clause, which is the idea that, you know, hey, what we will do is, you know, these towns that are losing money, we're actually going to hold off on that and we'll keep the increases to the towns that are getting the increases, but not redo the reductions. But you're saying now Eric, that sounds like there's not much appetite for that from what you can tell so far. These conversations in CROG, okay.
Right, so far, everybody we've been able to talk to that's part of the legislative process has said that's not going to happen. And as you can see, a lot of our neighboring towns are taking a pretty significant, you know, hit also. But it's, you know, it's up and down.
Yeah, okay. All right, board members, any questions for Andover here and, or for Andover, for Eric here? I just wanted to point out that this does affect our revenue line. It's not our expense line, but there is a, the educational cost sharing line item there. We'll take a look at the budget spreadsheet and how it impacts it, you know, in a minute here. No questions for Eric on that one? Okay, it kind of sounds like it is what it is, we just have to decide what we're going to do with it.
Actually, I have a question.
Go ahead, Louise.
Did they specify what the reduction was, or is it a flat dollar amount?
There's the formula, and it's, if you look at the, I don't know Eric, I didn't share this stuff, I probably should have with the Board of Finance. I didn't realize initially they were not there. But there's a, there's a very specific formula based on your demographics and issues and all those things that actually calculate based on the demographic and the town situation that results in that number. It's not something that somebody selects, you know, it's not like somebody randomly says Andover doesn't get this anymore, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a copy of the formula, you know, I read through the formula. Basically, they're doing a couple of things, they're adding more funding to, they're increasing the kind of weighting factor for English language learners, you know, and they're adding more money to the open choice and some of the magnet programs, you know, and VOAG, none of which is really applicable to us per se.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, let's move on to item 4A3, which is the adjustment of the building admin line item. Eric, do you want to give us a summary of that, please?
Sure, we had kind of worked out the numbers before the last meeting, but since we went to public hearing, the last public hearing with, with the numbers we had agreed at the meeting to previous to that, we've just refined, we, I had originally told the board it was roughly a $45,000 savings by combining those two positions. The actual savings when you, when you really account for all the items is a little more than that. So the line item for that position, for the building admin position has been, you know, was just a flat $45,000 decrease. Now it reflects the actual expected expenditure. So that has decreased the town's budget by $3,000 or $4,000, it's not much.
I think it's closer to $6,000. Went from 45 to 39 something in that line item.
Yeah, let me just pull it up so I'm not speaking off the cuff.
Yeah, you have $39,301, we originally budgeted $45,000, so it's about $5,700.
Yeah, that's about right.
Okay. So that's, that's to the positive, that's, that's a decrease in expected expenditures. So partially offsets the bad news, we got an educational cost sharing.
And that takes into consideration benefits and everything, right?
Well, because it's a combined position and her benefits are already encompassed in the town clerk's position, the only thing it adds to the benefits, it accounts for the contributions to social security and accounts for the additional contribution to MRF, the retirement package. So it doesn't account for additional healthcare benefits because it's just one person.
Other questions or comments, discussion on that item? Okay, let's move on to agenda item 4A4, which is to finalize the budget for the town budget meeting. So we've got some new information today that changes our picture a little bit from the last, the last meeting we had, which was the public hearing. We have a net increase to our expected costs of about $61,000. So we have to decide how to treat that. So Amanda, can you let me share my screen, please?
Go ahead.
Make sure we have the right one here, okay. All right, so this is just the department totals. And there's some notes over here on the right. This is probably a little tough to see if you don't have a large monitor, so I'm going to zoom in a little bit. So two line items changed. The first one is in the expense option or the expense line item here for the building department. Excuse me, I was making sure I went through the right one, there it is. So the building department line item, you can see this in the department summary total. This originally was, I can't remember where we took this down, somewhere, I think we allocated a little more money, but this, this expenditure item is at $39,301. Whereas previously, it was at about $44,043. So yeah, I'm sorry, it's probably, it's a little more like $5,000, not $6,000. So there's about a $5,000 decrease in our expenditures on this particular line item. Everything else in this is, remains the same, based on what we presented at the public hearing last week. And then the big change is actually here in the revenue column. So in the revenue column, we have educational cost sharing is this line right here, okay? We'd originally expected, you know, roughly about $2 million. Pop over to see the actual amount. Yeah, the educational cost sharing was about, expected to be about 2 million. Well, it's the same as the previous fiscal year, so it's right there, 2,4782. And we've got that reduction to 1,936,854. So those are the two line items that have changed in this, in this budget here. The rest of the notes. So what's the impact right now? So we were looking at last budget, we're looking at a percent mill increase of 3.43, estimated mill rate of 36.83. With this new information, it takes us to 36.97 would be the required mill rate under the current budget. So taxes would increase by that amount. The percent mill increase rate increase would be 3.83. So I think we as a board need to decide how to handle this change and finalize the recommended budget to be presented at the town budget meeting next Thursday. It seems to me that we have roughly, I guess, three options, three main options. One is we reduce the budget for the town or AES or somewhere both to accommodate that $67,000 decrease in revenue. We can let this tax increase stay where it is. You know, the calculated tax increase, it takes it up to 36.97 mills. Or we could assume, which was kind of what I was hoping I'd hear, something different from Eric, but we could assume that the state legislature is going to come through and actually do something around that hold harmless clause and not make any changes to the recommended budget. Obviously, the risk with that last option is that the state doesn't take any action around that, which is kind of what Eric is hearing. And then we would have to handle that differential through some type of contingency funding. To me, that's not a wise option. I think we have to be a little more conservative in how we approach this. So I would think that we either need to reduce our expenditures or we accept this mill rate increase as it is calculated here and pass that on to the town. Or we do a mix of both. So, and just a reminder of the process, you know, once we pass on the recommended budget to the town, we do not have the opportunity to increase it. At the town budget meeting, we can only change line items and do an overall decrease to the budget. So that being said, that's, that's kind of my piece. Any comments or questions from the board?
I think, this is Diane, I think we need to find a place to reduce this and live within our means. And the only place I can think of getting it from is from the school AES budget. I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks.
Other comments or input?
No, like Diane said, this is Dave, there's only two line items that have any significant cuts. And it's AES and it's the trooper, and we've talked about that before.
Yes, we did.
We're looking for a net of about 61?
66 roughly, yeah.
Oh, 66.
Yeah.
I thought the two changes netted out.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's 67 was the reduction against about a $5,000 saving, 62.
Right.
So, the one thing is, if, if we're really talking about this budget, I mean, this budget overall in terms of the actual total expenditures, you know, our year-over-year increase in expenditures is about 120,000, you know, on a $12 million budget. So we are 12-plus million dollar budget. So for the year, year-over-year, in terms of expenditures, we're up less than a percent. You know, I get that, you know, trying to explain to the taxpayers, you know, because the taxpayers are going to feel a much bigger increase, but it's not really an increase in expenditure overall.
Yeah, understood.
It's the, it's the decrease in revenue plus the pulling less out of contingent, not contingency, sorry, out of balance.
Sherry, what's up?
Sherry, go ahead.
I have a question. Eric, where are we showing the $319,000 grant that the town got for the American Rescue?
We're not, because first of all, only half of that would come in this upcoming fiscal year. And we can't use that to offset taxation, so.
I understand that, but I, I just wanted to know, you know.
That's a good point, you know, we should, we should certainly put that on the budget message.
Explain that a little more, Eric?
So we are, you know, according to the American Rescue Act or American Recovery Act, or whatever you call the thing, Andover is slated at some point to get two allotments of money. Each one will be around $159,000 or $160,000. But it's, it's money that can be spent for very targeted things. And what you absolutely can't do is use it to offset taxation. So I guess what I'm saying is, in the federal government still has not released the actual rules for expenditure of that money, at least as it pertains to things that are of interest to the town. Like there, we know there's some things we can spend, like we could give money to our town businesses legally. We know we can do that. But what we don't know is what town stuff we can spend that money on. We're going to be able to spend a fair bit of it to do some good for the town, but we frankly don't know what the rules, the real rules for its usage are going to be.
So what's your level of confidence that we could use that money against any of the line items in our budget versus something that we haven't considered spending money on?
I mean, the only things we, there are some things we could potentially spend it on. Depending on how liberally or how narrowly they define categories, we're allowed to spend it on broadband infrastructure, water infrastructure, and sewer infrastructure. If they brought in the category, you know, sewer infrastructure to cover septic systems and things like that, we could potentially use that money for relocation of the main septic tank that covers the town hall in anticipation of putting a community center in. We could use that to pay for the AES septic repairs that need to be done. If it's, if we have a really broad definition of, you know, water infrastructure, maybe we could use it to pay for the sprinkler system for the veterans monument. Broadband, it's possible we can use that to put a VoIP system in for the town. It's also possible we can use that to fund, I know the Board of Ed had to pull back a request for, you know, an updated wifi system in the school. So all these things are possible, we just honestly don't know at this point. It's kind of maddening that they haven't put out the rules yet, you know.
A lot of stuff is in our current budget, so to speak, it would all be future projects.
Correct, correct.
It doesn't get us out of this little quandary we're in right now.
Not that I can see, I mean, are there some things? Yeah, I mean, I guess you could maybe reduce money in the building fund and think that some of that expense you could shift. But, you know, I don't know. I mean, if I knew, I would, you know, strongly consider that, but I don't really know.
Eric, what about the trooper? Can we reallocate any of that expense to that, that grant perhaps?
I don't think we can, we can't allocate, see, here's the funny thing. We can pay premium money for some reason. We can't pay employees' salaries, but we can give them bonuses, basically. If you look at what was actually in that bill, you're allowed to pay essentially, for lack of a better term, a COVID bonus.
Like a contractual, contractual amount, maybe? In, in the way of security or safety, that kind of thing during COVID.
Yeah, like you're, like, for instance, they give the example of if you wanted to give your firefighters or your EMT personnel a, you know, a premium or shift differential during that period for having to have dealt with COVID patients because of the increased risks, you could clearly do that. You know, but I just, you know, I feel like we're really hamstrung because we don't know what the eventual rules are going to be. I mean, I'm sure we're going to be able to spend it on something, I just don't know what yet.
I've just been researching what a couple of other towns are doing. And they are allocating some of that money to the troopers dealing with COVID-related instances and also with the town fire department kind of thing. The EMTs then whatnot that are getting called out on COVID calls and that kind of thing. So I just bring that up because I know a couple of towns are going down that avenue and somebody must have gotten some okay from somebody at the, at that level to, in order to do that, you know.
When you say trooper, it's probably the town police department though, rather than a state trooper like we have.
Right, right, it's a town.
Ours is a flat fee, there are no additional funds that we would have to pay due to COVID-related expenses, at least with the trooper, is that correct Eric?
That is correct.
So we can't, it's hard to argue that there's COVID-specific related costs there. What, nothing, nothing?
Worth a shot.
What?
Yeah, worth the shot, you know, it's a photo, it has an idea.
You've got to think about these things, it's a good point.
I'm thinking out of the box.
Exactly. Eric, nothing that has anything to do with, with the educational costs related to COVID in this particular grant?
No, I mean, our, unfortunately, our elementary school, you know, didn't get any grant funding through that, as far as I know. I mean, Val can give you a more, but you know, we kind of got screwed on that.
And this is specifically for town costs, not educational costs? Well, the specific infrastructure costs you talked about or support costs?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could, we could potentially, you know, maybe backfill one or two of the things the school wanted to do but couldn't. But, you know, again, I don't know. I mean, I can think of a couple of things that we potentially can spend the money on, but I'm not confident in telling you what that is until somebody comes out with an actual set of rules. Right now, the rules are like three lines, water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, broadband infrastructure. What does that mean, you know? I know it's something that both COST Council, Small Towns, and CCM are, you know, trying to weigh in on with their legislative, you know, with their lobbyists trying to get as liberal a definition as possible to make it as flexible as possible. But whether they succeed or not, I don't know. I wish I did.
That's a good question, Sherry, okay. So it doesn't sound like you're confident that we'd be able to apply any of that against our current budget line items.
No, in fact, we are, you know, that is the one thing that's made absolutely clear in the act is that you can't use it to offset existing taxation, so it has to be.
If we were smart, we'd be budgeting for these extra COVID costs anyway. So to me, it's kind of a moot point, you know, I mean, record saying that if we're smart, we're doing that. Record saying that if we're smart, we're doing that and, you know, we'd be lucky to get the additional funds and we use them appropriately, but anyway, that's that's. May maybe. Anyway, it is what it is. So Valerie, do you have any insight into maybe school line items that? You know, might be applicable, fall under this?
I actually can sit with Eric and go over, I I'm I'm actually the opposite of Eric, I'm 100% confident that that that. There's going to be places in our current budgets. To be able to spend it, I've done this twice already with Esser grants because we got Corona at the beginning and then Esser one and two. And, you know, it, I actually was able to put through under air quality control, it's all in how you word it, boys and girls. I was able to put in air, under air quality control to get air conditioning in the preschools. I know Sherry's like, yeah, people said you'll never get it through. I did because of the age of the children, the heat and the fact that they were most likely not to wear masks. And it went through. And so, you know, that Sherry knows she's good at it, I'm good at it, I've done this a couple of times now, I'm 100% confident. That we could get that 319, whether it's in the town budget, the, you know, town, whatever, school. I I know that between the three of us, we could take stuff, Mark, that exists already in this budget and get it covered. I'm 100% confident of that because we've done it already, actually, three times, Esser one. Esser two and Corona relief and got in everything that we asked for. I did not get a single one of those grants sent back for revisions.
We, you just have to be creative and you also have to keep in mind. They want you to spend this money, they don't want it back. They seriously on the state level are giving this money to us so that we do come up with. These ideas creatively and spend that money and. You know, you just have to be a little creative, I would think, so.
There's a two of us. Sherry, they all had in there also, Mark, the the goal is obviously it's given to the town. So not that you can't use it for the school and I'm not asking you to. But the goal is to spend it on things that benefit the town. So I know that there's a rider that's going to be in there that's with a lot of them where you can use it. Anything that's going to increase or get you back to your levels of tourism. Which includes signage, which include at least to the bridge. Because that's right there by, you know, the walk that everyone uses to the museum, to the library. Public places, things that benefit the community, so. Eric's right that they haven't given us, you know, that final document yet as to, you know, what's there, absolutely. But I know Sherry and I have done this a number of times with other grants and I've never had to send money back. And I've always gotten them approved and has Sherry has as well, so I am confident that that we'd be able to use it. Oh, oftentimes too, it's social services and anything that deals with community health and wellness, which would cover AHM costs. So, you know, there is always something, Mark, that you can get through there, so once that, once that guidance comes out. You know, if if it comes out and and Eric's stumped it all and there's Sherry, and then if they were looking for another mind, I'd be willing to help figure it out, but. You know, I'm sure.
What's the mechanism for this grant funding?
What do you mean mechanism? I don't know for the town, ours goes through eGrants, so I'm not sure.
My point is you have to apply for it and then you're awarded it or do you have to?
They give you, they give you an award amount and they say this is what you're entitled to, now fill out the grant application and give us your narrative. And in the narrative, you give a budget summary, budget by object, you tell them what it is you need it for. If it's one big project, you write a SMART goal. And every grant's a little bit different and they do give you an opportunity, Mark, if you do submit something. To say, yep, nope, that's not going to fly and then they tell you why and it it gets sent back to you, so.
But it's an application process, you've got a limit cap, Eric, that's kind of your understanding. You've got an award cap and then you have to basically put in an application to this.
Right.
No, I think so, actually, I I think from my reading, they're going to give us the money.
With the allocate.
By our expenditures, so they're going to put that money in our account. But then, you know, we have to document what we've spent it on.
Okay, all right, that's that's kind of what I was getting at.
Either either way, there's documentation, either before they actually cut the check or after they cut the check.
Sure, but if, you know what, if that money's in your account, I would think it's a little bit, you know. It it's a little less risky than if it's. Somebody's got to actually approve a a wire transfer somewhere, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any reason, I, it's not that we're not going to get it. It's just the the details of what exactly we can spend it on. I mean, it's not like we don't have an enormous amount of needs. You know, that are outside what we can effectively budget for. You know, the the town has plenty of things it needs to spend money on. I mean, I would happily spend that entire 160,000 dollars if they'd let me working on town culverts. You know, because I got at least a million dollar unmet need for funding for that and I don't have the money to address it.
You know, if our culvert's on operation, it's going to be hard to bring in those tourists, I'm just saying.
I I agree, I agree. You know, and if we have to put signs in the culverts, even better. So I mean, it's it's it is really frustrating not being farther down, not having more clarity in what's budgetable. You know, that's. That's just me.
Is there a breakdown of the ECS grant cut that we're looking at between the regional and the elementary?
No, see, ECS is funded, is given to a town, so there's no breakdown, it's by town. So we get a total of $2 million and whether how we choose to spend that is our own business. So it's kind of divorced from the actual, from the the revenue side and the expense side are pretty divorced in that case.
Have we received this grant we're talking about in previous years or is this really the first year that this is on there? Just wondering if there's a line item in the revenue for it?
Uh, no, there's not, this is something that's completely, in the end. Last year, we got, I think, a total of $31,000 on the town level in coronavirus relief funding. Of which we haven't spent much of that. But, you know, you've you and the board of selectmen have already decided to spend that on, you know, the the monument. Upgrade projects.
So just wondering about from a from a mechanic standpoint in the budget, I was trying to see whether where we land.
And and the other thing you have to decide is you you, we typically don't in the town budget. List the completely separate funds, like we normally don't in the town budget account for town aid road. Even though that's money that comes in and money that's spent in the town side. And we don't necessarily account for all, at least in the town's presentation, we don't normally, you know. Deal with the grants and the other revenue by the elementary school. So, you know, just, we've never really done that, maybe we should going forward and we could if we so chose, but we we haven't typically.
You know, my inclination is that you you show all of your inflows and outflows, you're saying Tom and Adrian really doesn't appear on there and, you know, it's. It's something we pull in and it's something we spend, right?
That is true, that is true, and I've always wondered that. That's always been accounted for, that's always been a essentially a.
Considered a while.
Been accounted for in that manner.
Doesn't mean you don't account for it. Okay. Well, just something for future thought, I'm not sure that we want to muddy the waters on that with this year's budget. So. I'll just propose to the board that it sounds like there is an option, depending on our appetite for. Risk that this wouldn't be approved. That we could in. Add a line item to the revenue side for this grant. In some amount up to and including, what is it, 139,000?
159, I think, was it, it's 319 cut in half?
Yeah, it's 319 divided by two.
Yeah, so.
159.5.
Right.
But if you show it on our current budget, what expense? Would be a legitimate expense that we would be offsetting or is it going to be future stuff that's not even in the budget?
Well, that that's the that's the question, Mark, and obviously, you know. Trying to think about how we, we're all talking about being creative, maybe there's some creative budgeting that we need to do. Some, I I hate to do the budget this way, but some sort of unspecified. Category we we throw it into. You know.
It doesn't, it doesn't benefit us to add another expense category, I think we would.
No, no, revenue side, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, I think we just put it in as a grant, whatever the name of the grant, official name of the grant is, we had a revenue line item, it's kind of done that. What what is the name of the grant here, Eric?
Uh, I think it's American Recoveries Act Grant.
American Rescue Relief Funding?
That's probably closer to the exact name.
I'm going to call it ARF, A R R.
They actually use ARP, but I always think of like the the elder agency of ARP, but that's what they actually use on a federal level is ARP.
We might as well mimic that.
All right, so I've just, I can throw this up there.
Now, if we put it in in the revenue, but it's not, you know, specifically earmarked for a particular usage on the spending side. Do we, once the. Once we get more clarity on where we can use it and the grants start getting written, the proposals get written or whatever it is. Do we need to kind of go back as a board and approve allocating it out?
I mean, are you just assuming you're going to use that money to offset taxation, is that what you're?
To me, that's a, that's just a non sequitur argument, I I don't really, I mean, I understand. I understand probably why the language is inserted and I'm certainly not a lawyer or legislator, but. You know, they're probably doing that just to prevent towns from just, they're probably. It's probably some kind of effort just to prevent towns from like increasing their spending just because they got this money, so. You know, but I mean, the reality is if you have these extra expenses, you know, you're you're generally going to account for them in the budget. You know, maybe that's something like a tourism enhancement project or something like that, maybe that would be extra and maybe that's what their intent is. But, you know, it seems odd to me that you're going to have a lot of municipalities just. They're coming up with these different projects to promote infrastructure and it may, maybe it just really is a stimulus package in that sense, but. I I I don't know.
I mean, when you put it in the budget here on the revenue line and then all the numbers come out, we are using it to offset taxes, so we'll set the mill rate at a low.
I mean, this is, this is how money works, though.
This is how money works, yeah, the end, the end number is zero, right? So you you take in your stuff and you, you know, well, unless it goes into a fund, right, you're you're expended. But, you know, ultimately, you you're still going to have an offset in taxes, it just depends on what you do with your expense side. You know. If you rate, if what we're not doing here is we're not increasing our expenditures strictly because we have this extra money. And maybe that's kind of what their, the legislature's intent was there, but it's not clear to me, I think that that's. Kind of a semantics thing almost, maybe I'm, maybe I'm all wet on that one. But, you know, to me, ultimately, you are offsetting taxes. You know, that you would have to add add in to if you were to increase your expenditures, the amount that this grant.
I mean, honestly, I look at it a way to accomplish some things, you know, that we can't afford to budget for.
That you wouldn't normally do in this budget here, yeah.
Right. Yep. But that's just me, you are the board.
Well, you know. I think that being given any more guidance, unless the guidance is pretty clear and we're just taking a liberal approach to it, interpretation of it.
In essence, by adding this in here, whatever we spend above and beyond this budget for a special project next year. Will be offset by this money because it's not going to be, it's not going to be raised by taxes. Because the mill rate's going to be reduced.
So if you just put this into the budget with the intention of reducing the mill rate. Then, you know, you're you're making two assumptions, you're making the assumption that you can apply. You can find some project that's actually funded that you could pay for with this instead of what we were budgeting for. You know, and and you're saying we're not going to do anything outside what's in our current budget. Which, you know, may be the way you want to go, I I mean, I'm not telling you that's a bad thing, I'm just telling you that that is the repercussion.
I mean, imagine a world in which we had clear guidance and we knew that we could use 155, 59K to throw at culverts, you know? What might we do, Eric, is we might cut our covert budget and then reinsert. The money we were getting, but we can't do that right now because we don't know exactly where it's going to go.
Or we just offset that 67K we lost through educational cost sharing, which, you know, you could argue that our. Clearly argue that our our educational costs are higher than they would be because of COVID. And I know that's not the purpose of this grant, or at least that sounds what it's not like, and you could just increase the bridge and cupboard spending. For the by the the additional amount, you know, $90,000 there. Or or maybe we, or maybe we take some middle road, I I don't know.
I think if we're going to take the risk, we just plug the number in here and let the numbers fall where they are and we'll figure it out next year.
I mean, that's where I'm starting to go with it and and that's why I asked the technical question of if we just throw it into the revenue. And then we get the guidance in, we get the grants written and whatever, when it comes time to spend it. Do if we need to take any further action as a board, like, let's assume the budget passes, we get through that. And then, you know, we get clarity on where we can spend this money. You know, do we need to come back and say, okay, we're now going to formally allocate that? Stuff to this, that, the other thing.
But remember, if you're wrong, there's $160,000.
Shortfall.
You know, shortfall in an already really tight budget.
Yep.
So that's going to hurt.
We can always find other ways to spend it, to take it out of where we put it. And reallocate it, the, that happens all the time.
We can probably find an acceptable use, but Eric's point still stands, if we take it out of another line item, we still got to make up that amount.
Well, my thought process is that we need to find out what it is that we need to spend this money on or can spend this money on. So I'm willing to do some research and call around and talk to. People who are in authority, just like we have on the school side, people are program managers of certain grants, they know and they can tell us. And then I could have something emailed to me with a variety of ways to spend it rather than just. Sitting here guessing what would be good and what not to be good. I think that would be a worthwhile conversation.
I think it would be most useful if the people you talk to are in similarly situated towns, rural towns that don't have. City sewer and whatnot, that are similarly situated, that have the same sorts of, that at least when you look at this thing on its face. Are looking at the same hurdles.
Sure.
But, and I agree, that's a worthwhile exercise, but I want to point out from a practical standpoint.
We have a week.
We we have to have a budget tonight unless we're.
Well, I understand that, I'm just saying. I'm just saying, if we want to just go and and put this where we want it. And then reallocate or adjust it later, there's time to do that. and then reallocate or adjust it later, um, there's time to do that.
Do we have anything further on the audit? Has there been any finalization there?
We're closer, but there's no change.
Pretty close, but, um, I haven't heard anything.
But the number we have to work with isn't changing. It's not getting better. Let's put it that way.
No, it's not what I was really getting. I I just, you know, I was thinking about it from the standpoint of, you know, if this drags out or it's a disaster scenario where we're wrong or something, that we still have some fund balance that I am loathe to use and except in case of disaster. Um, but I was just trying to think of, you know, where we're at. We're using a little fund balance this year, kind of the last time around to to plug holes in our capital budget. And that's going to leave us with, what, ten, eleven percent, right, after we do this in terms of our savings?
Yeah.
Um, if we're still ten percent, if we're still above the ten percent target, we may have some play, is kind of what I'm saying. If if in the, any absolute worst case scenario, which again, I kind of, I kind of have to think that ultimately, Sherry and Valo, right, we're going to figure this out. I just, hmm, I'm struggling with it too, from the standpoint of budgeting, when you have this question mark.
Well, one thing we could do is take a middle road. We don't need to allocate. We don't need to assume that we're going to be able to apply all a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars against the projects we're planning, you know, maybe, maybe we could also just say, maybe it's fifty thousand, you know, maybe it's twenty-five, maybe it's a hundred. So there might be a middle road, and then if it turns out we have an opportunity, we get the hundred and fifty-nine K, we figured out that there's more ways to spend it. We've come up with some creative stuff, you know, we 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 put in a, you know, lavish water fountain at the Veterans Memorial Park or something, you know, that, you know, that, that's all, uh, that, that's all positive, right? That's all in net.
Are we still talking about showing this grant as a revenue item?
Okay.
Losing any expenses?
Just so you have it, this is what came from Office of Fiscal Analysis at the state and this, the, uh, um, you know, kind of use of funds. Workers who perform essential work or provide grants to employers with employees that provide essential work. Um, you know, government services to the extent of lost revenue from the public health emergency, which is not applicable to this town, because we haven't really lost any revenue per se. You know, and investments in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a pretty freaking vague, you know? Um, and I'm sure there will be a lot more detail, but we just don't have it yet.
Well, also point out the language in the next section that says it includes following restrictions. So it's clearly states not just reduce taxes directly, but also indirectly.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I mean, I think to think that you can just apply this to the budget legitimately is, to me, does not seem correct. And I'm not sure there's not some kind of budgetary gimmick we can do to make that happen. There may very well be, but, you know, I'll make Sherry sign that one, not me.
No problem. I mean, the word indirectly is.
Yeah.
Problematic, yeah. I mean, that's the character of it.
Yeah.
Makes me less comfortable than I was before.
Yeah, that's not great. Between March third till the last day of the fiscal year in which the funds have been received, spent or returned.
So June thirtieth next year. Yeah, just means the next budget year, between now and the next budget year.
Yeah. I mean, it's a little pressure, and and this is where you get into semantics. It's like our taxes are going up regardless. But yeah, it's an offset. I know, I, the indirect, that's that's concerning to me, and I almost wonder what town attorney would make of that, or.
I mean, the town attorney would say, wait for guidance.
Yeah, I know. I know, I know. I work with attorneys. I'm very familiar.
Right. I I mean, you you may very well be right, and there may be, we may be able to just plug this directly in. We very well may be able to. It's just a question of what, you know?
I guess the other option, which I don't love either, I'm just sort of brainstorming here. In order to deal with that language, is if we were to cut the capital budget by a certain amount and then say, whatever we get from this grant, we'll try to throw it capital to make that up later. I don't know. I don't like it either.
I'm concerned with initial feedback we got on the budget is there was a lot of talk about the capital and kicking the can and the roads and, you know, the trees, everything. And I don't know if we cut capital, but people are going to vote this to go to referendum.
Yeah, I know.
But I was surprised by that, those comments in the last meeting.
I mean, people get, yeah, I mean, it's reality. We have done that. So we have, and we have capital needs. Eric talks about it all the time. We have this backlog.
I love the community center.
Well, that too.
For the community center.
Well.
Really, that money put aside. That's for the benefit of, uh, the community, uh, making it better.
I would hope that all that we're doing is for the benefit of the community, but.
What are we loading into, uh, that capital fund this year?
We're adding fifty thousand dollars, but we're already spending fifty thousand this year, you know, in this budget cycle. So we're just keeping it status quo. So.
No, I guess.
Going forward, and, you know, we're probably not going to be breaking ground on that next year, by the way things move, but there will probably be things with the community center that we can use these grant funds for, like the relocation of the septic, if it's broad enough. Solar, you know, we're going to put, so I don't know if solar would even kind of qualify in that infrastructure.
It's odd to me that they didn't include power infrastructure.
Right.
Because that's clearly.
I mean.
Yeah, the water thing, it seems so.
Antiquated.
Oddly, oddly narrow. It is oddly narrow.
Water and sewer, yeah.
You know, and and that's been a a huge topic of discussion among the town administrators. Because they put in one word, water infrastructure. Can we spend that on culverts? Is that only water supply? Could we pay for that to drill wells? You know, probably, maybe all of the above. You know what? I don't know. Maybe we could give it to Alpoa. I don't know. Yeah, you know, I don't. It is frustrating to be at the point this far along in the budget process, know you're getting money and not know what you can use it for.
Wouldn't be talking about this if they didn't cut our educational cost sharing.
Right. Well, maybe we should have been anyway.
Propose that cut anyway, but.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
That's, yeah.
Um, we know we've gotten the town aid roads. Can we use that to offset something instead of this ambiguous grant?
I mean, spending out on the roads, right, so?
We spend a hundred percent of town aid road money on roads.
I know. I'm just trying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I I guess I'll say that, given the language that I just read, I'm uncomfortable personally, uh, budgeting, adding this as a revenue line item to the budget this late in the game without the ability to further explore. And I think there's a probably a very good opportunity for us here to do something that we wouldn't have done otherwise, but I I'm not sure, uh, given the language, that, uh, that I'd be comfortable adding that line item, which is obviously different than I thought a few minutes ago, but, uh.
Mark, I agree with you on that. Um, I'm thinking more that it's going to cause more confusion because it's going to be a lot of questions. Maybe if the hearing is, you know, what can we use it for and all that? And quite frankly, as far as submitting this to the town, you know, the budget the way it is right now, we've kind of gone around and around quite a bit, and we've kind of gone bare bones. My thoughts are to present it the way it is without that extra money in there and see what the town says. If they can, if we can reduce, hopefully we'll get some feedback from them and us, because we're them, to, um, determine where that reduction will come from. That's my thought on it.
Yeah, I I tend to agree with you, Louise.
I do think we can mention in, when we present it to the town, that, look, it's not, this is not in the budget. Somebody may ask. Look, this, you may have heard, we we are going to get some grant money from the feds. It's not in the budget, and here's why. And right now, we just don't feel comfortable bringing you a budget that includes this because of the ambiguity, and then move on.
Yeah.
Without trying to believe.
Yeah, and say later that if we get it, it's a plus.
Right.
Yes, and anything we can do to defray, I'll try not to say offset, uh, you know, to benefit our town, you know.
Defray, offset, yeah.
Yeah, it's frustrating, because I just, I just think, like, money is fungible. It's so dumb.
I know, right, yeah.
Well, but because, I mean, honestly, every town would do the same thing. You guys were just contemplating, just plug it into the budget and reduce taxes, which is exactly the opposite of what this is designed. It's designed to be a stimulus package.
Yeah.
Just to reduce taxes.
But I, and and again, and and that's fair if you were talking about towns doing that to literally reduce taxes. We we are trying to defray a tax increase. It already got coming. Uh, you know, it's a little. To me, that's.
Sure, you're not a lawyer there, Rob, man.
I worked with them for twenty years. They rub off on me. What can I tell you?
The language is, alright.
You know, Your Honor, I see a distinction here, okay? This is distinguishable. Um, but no, I I I kind of agree. I mean, I, on the other hand, I I flip, I flip flop a little bit on this, you know. It's our job as a board to try and do what we can and bring them a budget that that is workable. Um.
Well, we're not bringing the budget.
From this ECS curve ball, uh, it's really late in the game. I think we had something, I I think we were more or less comfortable to go to the town with. And now we're looking at this sixty-two thousand dollar problem.
I have a question. What does it cost us to do a referendum, to do a vote? Because I'm, I'm, I'm fully expecting it to fail the first time.
Well, I think probably, if I were to guess, Diane, what's going to happen is it will fail at the budget meeting. Um, and it won't even go to referendum, and it will come back to you, um, in a couple of weeks to try again. But I mean, I could be wrong, you know, I, I, you know.
It's funny, because I feel like we had this conversation before the meeting started, that people seem agitated. The whole COVID thing, everybody's on edge and people are picking on things, and there's just a lot of, I hear a lot of disgruntled people out there.
Just to, to try to answer the original question, I thought, didn't the referendum cost us about two thousand bucks?
Yeah, I I think two to three thousand is probably a realistic number. Because, because remember, we still have to send out an official notice, so we got a mailing cost, and then we got a cost for all the poll workers. You know, and we got to get our memory cards updated, and there's a bunch of, there's a fair number of expenses you wouldn't think as part of that.
I I remember it costing, and and my number's probably out of date, is i- it's probably, like you say, it's probably higher now. I remember it being about two K, but that was years ago. Uh, so I wouldn't be surprised if it was two and a half, three thousand to run a referendum. Um, so it's not nothing, but it's also not eye popping. Uh, we obviously want to try to avoid taking something to a referendum that we think's going to fail. But I think it's a good point to point out that a lot of the times, if if it's really a tough budget, a comfort controversial budget, it doesn't make it out of the meeting.
Right. And then we'll know, right? I mean, we'll have some guidance that, uh, you know, obviously that can change one meeting to the next, but then that goes give us some guidance about where the real, you know, feeling is. I mean, I think we, we know where some of the, some of the angst is in this budget, clearly. Um, it depends on, on what the appetite of the, uh, of the residents is for this. You know, it's.
Yep, it's a hard call.
Yeah. Linda, you have any thoughts, Dave, about, uh, the idea of passing it on as is?
I don't think it'll pass, but, um, I don't know what to do at this late date, so I think it's as is.
Well, we could reduce our expenditures.
I mean, I I have a problem. I I'm uncomfortable cutting more, um, well, really anywhere, but cutting more from the AS budget, we already took a whack at it, and we don't really know, um, specifically what it would do. It's a, you know, I think, and we we cut like forty some odd, so that now, now you, if you threw it all on AS, you know, now you're up to a hundred. Um, if we go to cut it out of the town budget, I'm not sure where we find it. Uh.
You have to take it from capital.
Which we, which we've been, we shorted the capital budget last year.
And we've heard, there's, I think it was Diane pointing out, surprising how much, or maybe it was Louise, how how much people felt commented on that on our last, about public hearing, other meetings. Sorry, Dave, did you want to?
My, yeah, my comments, um, same as Louise, just kind of, I think, go as is. And, uh, town shoots it down, then, um, I have no problem looking at some line items, uh.
Yeah.
The cut. Um, kind of off topic, I just wanted to make a comment on that, uh, money due to the COVID relief. Not really similar, but in my business, we had a chunk of PPP money, and in the beginning, we didn't really know what to do with it. So I just kind of let it sit there in a fund, till we've, you know, got some guidance from the SBA. It was ridiculous trying to get rules and regulations. Well, as a town, we should probably do the same thing with that money.
Don't spend it before you know you got it, basically, right?
Yeah, just let it sit there until we get some clear clarification of rules.
Alright, so it sounds like there's some appetite to take the budget as is with the changes that reflect the reality of the likely educational cost sharing reduction plus the uh, more clear number on the combined position, uh, savings, uh, and maybe just roll that into the recommended budget. Any further discussion on that?
I just want to piggyback on that and just say that, you know, you you use the word, well, likely reduction of ECS, you know, given that that's not final. We're budgeting intelligently. I think you you do budget for that bad scenario, uh, but it's not a guarantee either. Um, and do we have any sense for the legislative timeframe on this, Eric, from the state? And when they may actually enact that? I mean, sometimes they drag this way out.
Um, you know.
I'm not right now.
Yeah. Thing you have going for you is you have a, a democratic governor and a democratic legislature. I mean, part of the question is, you know, the governor wasn't really too excited that the, the legislature added a ton of money to the ECS. So so that you know, the total appropriation for educational cost savings um, went up a hundred and eighty million dollars. So they added a lot of money to it, but then they changed the formula enough that it negatively affected us. So they're actually putting a lot more money into it. We're just not getting to take advantage.
Yeah, they're they're refocusing where it's going. Um, but, or at least that's the proposal. Uh, you know, the sausage gets made in the, when it comes down to to assemble the votes to pass it. Uh, and I I know in the past, and this is a bit of a third rail, and, uh, there was a year where this dragged out so long. We had finalized our budget, and months later, the legislature finally got around to doing what they were going to do, and we actually got lucky that year. Uh, I don't think we can count on any such thing, but I, just sort of in the back of our heads, remember, you know, that's not a done deal.
Right. So, and just so that we're all clear, you know, we're talking about basically a one point three six mil increase. Um, if we go as is right now with the spending we've outlined, am I correct, Mark?
Let me get to the right page. What did you say, Eric, one point three six?
Yeah, one point three six mil, went from thirty five point six one to thirty six point nine seven.
Yeah, once I take this grant out of there that I just popped in. I have three point eight three percent increase to thirty six point nine seven mil, right?
Correct, correct, yep, okay, I just wanted to make sure we. You know, we're both working off the same. Same sheet. You know, and that represents basically a point nine percent increase. In the actual budget, a total of a point nine percent increase.
Which by the way, was a question I got hit with today that I didn't have my, at my fingertips, uh, reporter for the River East called me. I was trying to get that particular number, she had the raised by taxation number, but not that, and I said, off the top of my head, I don't remember. But I knew it was low, I didn't know it was that low.
She called me too, I wondered. I was in meetings.
I told, and I, I told her, I was like, Mark just got back from Germany, you know? For you, I can get back to you, she's like, well, my story's due in forty three minutes, I said, well. Okay, I'm at work.
Yeah, it was same for me, okay. Alright, so.
That's the answer.
I, I think we do, we think we do have the, uh, we're on the same page, Eric. This is, uh, you know, this is what I have, um, based on that, taking out that grant that I popped in there to do a little what if. Um, but it, it does provide an estimated mill rate of thirty six point nine seven. Which is a three point eight three percent increase over the current mill rate. So that is where we are, uh, by adjusting the educational cost sharing to the likely level. And then clarifying the cleaning, or more accurately depicting the savings from the combined position.
Yep, okay.
So, that being said, um. We can discuss further, or somebody can introduce a motion. Related to this, uh, budget.
I mean, if we take this budget as is to town meeting.
I second that.
To clarify, yours, your, you are motion, the motion on the table is to. Recommend the town budget. That was presented at the last meeting with the clip, with the addition, with the correction of the combined budget plus the. Reflection of the sixty seven thousand roughly decrease in the educational cost sharing numbers, right?
Consider that a friendly amendment, yes.
Clear which, which budget we're talking about.
Yes, absolutely, the modified budget, with those two changes made.
Okay, that's, that's exactly, we should say that, that's better, thank you. And then Louise, you seconded?
Yes, I do.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to call for a vote, all those on the Board of Finance in favor, please say aye, aye. Any opposed? Do we have any abstentions? Okay, motion passes, thank you, everybody. That will be our recommended budget to be presented to the town meeting next Thursday. Okay, let's move on to our next, uh, top agenda item, which is item five, which is the Town Administrator's Report. Eric, the floor is yours.
So, I'm not gonna give a, an administrator's report for this one, just because I think. It's gonna be a long meeting by the time we get through everything we need to get through. So, I think we can hold off and I'll give you another one next month, unless there's specific questions.
Specific questions for Eric? Okay, I guess that's, uh, that's good then, thank you, Eric. Okay, that takes us to item six on the agenda, which is the Finance Department, uh, report. Number one is the town budget summary, six A.
Okay, so before we start, does anybody have any questions on the budget summary for either myself? Or Sheri Holmes, or Sheri?
Are you gonna share, Eric, or?
Uh, I was, well, what I was gonna share, if people didn't have specific questions. Is just, uh, I went through the town budget. Um, and I identified all those areas. You know, based on what we've expended so far, where I think we're going to be over. In those areas that I think we're going to be under. So, um, going down the overages, um, there's some, you know, fairly significant ones, we can talk all of them. Uh, about them in general, but the bottom line is if, if you add up everything that's an overage. You know, you come to a total of somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if you add up all the things in our budget, and that hundred and fifty thousand dollars includes. The Board of Selectmen's desire to transfer money. To, uh, spend on the Veterans Monument from the COVID relief funds, um, in an amount of twenty thousand dollars. And it also includes, um, what they had, and you, and we had talked about. Which is a transfer of money from this year's budget into the Treework Permanent Fund. To offset, because we decided not to put that money, the increase back in, uh. You know, next year's budget, so with those two items in. That comes, you know, our total number of things we're over on is about a hundred and forty nine thousand dollars. Um, and on the other hand, if you look at the areas where we're underspending the bunny, sorry, that should be, uh, underages.
I just saw the heart of that.
Thank you.
Um, so, the, the total amount of money that we're talking about where we've underspent. Um, is, as, as close as I can tell, somewhere around a hundred, um, and eighty or a hundred and eighty two thousand dollars. Now, there's gonna be other small things, this is gonna go up and down a little bit. But you know, but this is the broad categories of the big things, you know, we haven't, uh, spent on. So, the good news is, a- and this does include contingency. So if you look at the difference between the overages and the underages, um, at this point, that means we're spending roughly ten thousand. Of the contingency money, just to even up the budgets, if we take those two. If we do, do those two things, we're talking about the, you know, spend the money on Veterans Monument Park. And the transfer to the tree fund.
Um, wait, so Eric, hang on, hang on a second, so the net between these two. I- is roughly thirty two thousand dollars, and then you're saying. That, but that thirty two thousand dollars includes pulling ten from contingency?
Well, actually, it includes eighteen thousand from contingency, if you think about it. Cause I'm putting all of contingency in.
In here.
In the under expended, because we haven't spent anything from contingency. So, we're basically, at this point, looks like we're gonna be spending around eighteen thousand out of contingency. If we do those two things that both you and the Board of Selectmen have asked to do. Um, you know, that means we're, our margin of error is down to about thirty two thousand, something in that range.
Okay, but that's helpful, um, and we, you know, give or take that amount, if, if nothing else changes terribly much. That's sort of what we're looking at, um, for kind of our end of year. Uh, result.
Yeah, somewhere in there, I mean, that could change, that's, you know, me spending, you know, five or six hours going over the budget, so. I, I'd certainly welcome, uh, Sheri checking my math on that.
Marina and I had talked about this today. And we're going to sit down next week and go through. The rest of the expenditures, including the Board of Ed. Um, expansion, making sure everything is recorded on both sides and reconcile. Um, and then, um, we'll be able to give you a truer. Number, um, at the next meeting in May, we had talked about having a firm number as far as where we. Feel that we're gonna land.
Yeah, that's the one thing that could screw my calculations, is if there's something big that hasn't been actually inputted into. But I think. Yeah, I think you've pretty much put everything into.
I think so, but there's a couple of things we had talked about today that I want to make sure. Get in there and accounted for.
So, consider this very preliminary. Uh, but you know why I'm trying to zero in on this, is that if we actually end up having thirty thousand dollars lying around in contingency. I can't remember last year if we had much left in contingency and what we did with it. But that's also potentially found money.
So, last, last year at the, last year at the end of the year, we transferred. The majority of our remaining money, uh, into the permanent fund, so we could essentially roll it over. And not have it hit unexpended fund balance. But. You know, I think we probably could safely. You know, do the transfer to Treework, um, you know. You know, and, and I know you've, you've talked about that and the Board of Selectmen has talked about that. Um, so whether you do it now or you choose to wait a month or two, the advantage of doing it now is. We do a little better with the tree service, cause right now, most towns in mo- in the state are waiting on the next fiscal year. Most people have blown through their tree budget, so right now they have time and availability. Um, so there's some advantage to having the money now, um, but it's not a, you know. It carries some risk.
I mean, personally, given the amount of play we have there, I'm comfortable with it. I don't think we're gonna suddenly find that there's thirty thousand bucks in expenditure we didn't see coming.
Well, we just broke a public works truck that was, you know, uh, fifty something thousand dollars.
Oh, thanks, Eric.
There's an awful lot of things that could break, you know, that could come up with a big bill.
Yeah, okay.
Just don't break anything else.
That's my intention.
I'm glad to hear that. So, i- it sounds like Eric, what you're proposing is that we would need to make that motion to, uh. To transfer some funds to the Treework. Uh, fund.
So, you at, at the meeting, at the last regularly scheduled meeting about a month ago. Wanted a, uh, were considering a motion to do that. And honestly, I didn't have my act together to give you exact line items. You know, where it's coming from and where it's going to. Um, so you have that information now, if you choose to do it, you can make that motion now or you can wait. That's, that's kinda your fault.
You were proposing moving it from the Computer Services Fund one hundred dash oh one, one oh nine, oh one oh nine, seven three five. To the Treework Fund.
Correct, correct.
I thought we were taking it from COVID funds.
Not that. No, cause we pretty much accounted for all the COVID funds dealing with the, uh, the Veterans Monument.
So we're taking it from the software implementation? Okay.
Correct.
So. Well. What about the fact that we talked about? Um, that the school paid for the software. And we were going to reimburse for, for fifty percent. Um, we're still not doing that, or? I'm just wondering. Cause. We, um. Full thirty four thousand. That's what they pay. And, um. They were expecting. To get back half of that.
That hasn't really actually been part of the conversation, it might have been the original plan, I haven't heard that. Kinda, they wanted us to recognize that they, the, the school had borne the burden of the entire software. Uh, cost.
See, I wasn't here or part of the conversation, so I'm just. Researching and talking to people and, you know, I don't know. I'm just trying to get a handle on what. It should be or shouldn't be, that's all. I think with that educational cost sharing stuff coming in higher and sticking it in the budget, we have to. Leave it the way it is. We don't have any extra money.
Yeah, it's a different budget year, but what do you, are you suggesting that we don't touch the contingency fund Diane? Cause that's really kinda what we're talking about in a way.
No, I mean, I'm saying I don't think we have money to reimburse the school fifty percent. For the software. They were, I thought they took that money out of excess money from COVID savings. I can't remember, correct me if I'm wrong on that, I thought that was coming out of. Last budget year, we were talking about spending money ahead of time. And that was one of the items.
We, we can keep that out right now. Sheri, Sheri's right that that was the conversation, but Diane, yeah, you, you, you're, you're, you're okay with that. I don't want to interrupt you guys, but go ahead with the conversation and.
Well, I was gonna ask you, kind of what your take was on it anyway, so.
No, she was right to ask, because she's right, in our notes, it said that we were waiting for that as well as four thousand dollar reimbursement for computers and stuff. Um, for the cost of the merger, she's absolutely right, that was in the notes, so.
Reason why it didn't get done is because there was no account number in the budget, and so. We made sure that we set up an account number now for that thirty thousand dollars. And made sure it was identified, because that was the missing, missing link. You had made the, um. Decision and the motion and everything to transfer that money, thirty thousand dollars into the budget. And to be earmarked for the software. Um, system or whatever you want to call it. And, but it didn't get done because by the previous employee, because there was no account number. That she could identify. For, um, to bring it into the budget that way. So now we have set up an account number and brought it in to where it should be in the budget.
Sheri, so the, the town still owes you the four thousand dollars that we've agreed to and. Yeah, Marina told me the other day, she never sent it, but I was assuming that the town had paid that.
So, so, so let's put that, let's put that part on hold, because. You know, Eric, give me, and I'll be in Friday, give me and Sheri a chance to look through. Because if we can do without it, and, and just gift that thirty four to the town. We will, so Sheri's right, that's what it says in there, that that money's supposed to come to us. But we haven't quite gotten to where you are, Eric, with this list yet, Sheri and I are still working on overages and underages. Underages, if that's even a word, underages, um, but if we don't need that. Um, give us a week so that we don't do it, but, but if we don't need that to survive between now and the end. Then, we will gift that to the town as part of something already paid and not ask for that back. So, give us a chance to look at that, um, but Sheri is absolutely right, that Laura had left that written in there, that that's what we were waiting for.
And, and the other thing, at some point, we're gonna have to come to terms with, is that the town has budgeted for the whole cost. Of paying the auditor, um, and, you know, for whatever reason, two years in a row. Uh, the school has reimbursed us half the cost of the audit. But, I don't have any documentation as to why you've done that, I mean, you have done that.
The budget to be nice, um, but, but I don't think we planned to do that, Eric. But I do know that we planned to also pay all of Sheri's salary in our budget, even though that was supposed to be split for next year, so. You know, we haven't asked for that yet either, um, I. So, you know, we haven't asked for that yet either. Um, I, I have that in our budget as well. So her whole salary, so you know, between. Sherry's half of the salary, the thirty thousand for, or half of the thirty thousand for the software and the four thousand for setting up the two offices. We have covered that and I will sit with Sherry and really try to make sure that we don't have to ask for that back. Is that fair? So as long as Sherry can sit there with the books and make it happen for us, um, and we're not in the negative, then, then we won't ask for that back.
So, so to summarize, I think that the, the. Potential proposal in front of us is to. Move the thirty thousand from the software fund to the tree work fund, which is something we contemplated in previous meeting, agree that it probably was a good thing. But it, this has, um, a couple of risks associated with it. One is that we basically are tapping the contingency fund, leaving only about thirty-two thousand in there remaining. And the other thing is that if the school district was to come upon some kind of shortage, they might need some help covering that shortage. Have I mischaracterized any of that?
Nope.
Okay, so then in order to take any action, we would need to have a, a motion to make that transfer of the money. From the, uh, uh, computer fund to the tree work fund. Anybody in the board have any more comments or would anybody like to make a motion to that effect? I'll tell you what, I'm just normally sent the chairs. Chairs, uh, activity to make the motion, but I'm gonna go ahead and do it, so I think it's. It's probably appropriate and I think it's relatively safe this late in the game, but I'm gonna motion that we transfer twenty-five thousand dollars. Probably thirty thousand dollars. Your motion, now they had some twenty-five thousand dollars in there, but we'll say thirty thousand dollars from account. One hundred dash zero one dash zero one zero nine dash seven three five, which is Computer Services to the Treework Fund. Which is one hundred dash zero, zero dash thirty-seven hundred dash zero forty-nine for this year's fiscal budget.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, Rob, seconds. Any further discussion on that? Okay, I'll call for a vote, um, to the Board of Finance members. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Board. Okay, we will, uh, continue our, uh, agenda items there. Uh, Eric, do you have, uh, more?
Uh, no, not, um, not until we get down to, uh. Let's see.
I mean, we, we're basically a town budget summary. We took some action on the town budget now. Uh, I don't know that we wanna, we need to review the revenue or tire spending, over expenditure report, any? Any over expenditures we need to discuss?
Uh, no, I mean, I gave you a list of all the things that were gonna be over expended, um, you know, there's quite a few.
No specific authorization, they're saying.
Right, but honestly, I don't have my act together to, to, uh. Say exactly where I want to take each one of these from. Um, and we're in the last quarter, so when we do it, we'll just make all the transfers basically in one big final motion. Um, is how I would assume we'll deal with it.
Alright. Any other?
I can, I can send you this if you would like it.
That spreadsheet, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'll leave that to the other board members. I'm okay without it. Sherry, go ahead. You have the floor.
Um, I just want to point out on the revenue summary is where my focus is gonna be right now. To make sure that all the revenue, um, has been properly recorded. Um, so that report is gonna look a lot better, um, and. With that.
Better how?
He said, well, when I rec- the reconcile the bank statements, um, the bank statement's only reconciled through December. And I talked to Laura today, so we've got to reconcile January, February, and March. And reconciling those, you do discover how, what is recorded and what isn't recorded. And revenue, and I believe there are some things that haven't been recorded yet properly.
Uh, so the numbers actually may change, it's not just.
Yes, yes.
Not just the.
Other good.
Variety.
And actually what the auditor is requesting me to take a look at and to do. Uh, update the revenues, so. We'll have that, um, all sewed up. Hopefully by the next time you see this report.
Okay, good, thank you. I just want to point out too, just for people who are, um. That is, don't necessarily have it in front of them, that all of the budget detail, the revenue summary we're talking about, et cetera, is all in the, uh, Board of Finance packet. It is on the town's website, so, you know, we're, we're referring to it as we go through here. Okay. Any other questions for Eric and Sherry? Okay, we don't have any, uh, agenda items, seven of the budget transfers, uh. Supplemental purchase reactions, over expenditure reports, we have none?
None that I'm prepared to, uh, to give you. In truth, I should have them for you, but I do not, and I will readily admit that.
Okay, let's hope your over, over and under analysis was fairly accurate there then.
Me too.
Okay, any further questions for Eric and Sherry on the, uh, on the budget, uh, budget transfers? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to item eight, which is old business, uh, eight A is the software transition. What do we have to report there?
We were on a call the other day. Um, with the program manager from Edmonds of Tech. And he wanted to get a feel for, um, our chart of accounts. Uh, our reports that would be required, uh, to produce from the software. Um, we sent them reports for both sides, town and Board of Ed. And he has emailed me, um, as of today with a list of other items he would like to. Us to send them, so I'll be working on that list as well. Um. The, um. I think overall this transition will, will go smoothly once we get started. Um, the actual software is on our server. Um, there's a little bit of tweaking that they need to do so that we can. Um, have it, uh, go live as far as the training basis is concerned. So that we can start the training on both sides. Um, we're pretty anxious to, to get going on that. They will do the conversion of our data. On both sides, town and board. And they also are requiring a list from us as far as the account numbers go. What account numbers we don't want to transfer over, which I have a report that I will be sharing with them. All the account numbers that won't go over because they have zero balances and we haven't used them and God only know when. The other, um, piece on the town side will be reclassification of certain account numbers. Getting rid of the very detailed account numbers like brooms or stuff like that. And this is to, um, go along with the uniform chart of accounts on the municipal side. And create accounts that they recognize and everyone else recognizes. To be supplies like, you know, six-ten and those kind of things, okay? So we're gonna do some reclassifying of that and changing that. I will also build a crosswalk when I'm finished doing that with them. So that it's an easy transition going from point A to point B. And the reporting should be actually, um, a lot easier to follow. In my opinion, it's just, it, it'll be so much better. Um, and so that's what we're trying to work with the programmer with. Um, I have to have a conversation about the database, you know, and how that's all gonna work. Um. With them and just verify what their, um, direction is going to be in that respect. So that we, um, get exactly what we should be getting from them. So. If there's any questions, I, I'd be willing to answer them, but I think that's it for now. We will be on many calls over the next several months. Um, until we get to the point of the training and then go live on July first. Is our goal. That's my goal and we're certainly gonna work towards that.
Good. That sounds like some good progress. I know having been through this a couple of different times and different points in my career, I know it's a big, big job, so.
Hmm, and Eric was on the call and Valerie was on the call, so we were all there. Having the conversation with the, with Eric Leonard, his name is, and he's gonna be the program director of this.
Right, and, you know, one of the things I think we still need to work out is. At least the first selectman and the Board of Selectmen was very adamant that we end up with a single database that encompassed both. Um, and the, the problem we're running into is the town and the school both have different tax ID numbers. And they're not really set up to handle a single database with multiple tax ID numbers. And so that's gonna have to, we're gonna have to figure out a solution. Either we're gonna have to compromise. Um, you know, and go with multiple databases or they're gonna have to figure out how to, how to make it work. I don't know what the Board of Finance's feelings are, um, on that.
What's the practical result? When you say, when you say multiple databases, does that mean you just cannot combine the numbers and for reporting purposes?
Right.
Basically two separate accounts and the.
Right, the IRS recognizes the town with one. Uh, ID number and the school with another ID number. That's how we do the reporting for the W twos.
Yeah.
And for ten ninety-nines.
Yeah, and for the practical purposes though, for what the selectmen are looking for, you really just can't have combined reports.
No.
You're gonna have to produce separate reports and consolidate them in Excel or something like that.
Well, what has been customary in my, um, experience is that you have the two databases, one for the town and one for the school. Neither one of you can look at their, each other's data. But what you've done is different this time around is that you've hired a finance director. Who has access and is linked to both. So my point is, if you want to bring transparency. What is gonna have to be is that we request a, um, if you request a report of the Board of Education. It's up to the Board of Education to approve that report, you know, moving forward. I can, you know, work with both town and board to make that happen. So it's a smoother, um, transition and it's a smoother working relationship between the two. Um, so that's my hope. I will have the conversation with the selectmen. And, um, I will explain the situation and how the software company is, um, proposing. Like any other software company that you would go with, would propose exactly the same thing. And when I first came here and I heard one database, I knew that wasn't gonna be possible. Just by virtual of the fact that you have two different ID numbers, tax ID numbers. Okay, and I realized that was, I think that was the conversation early on and I was not privy to that, but. Um. It's just something that we have to deal with and come to terms with. And I need to have that conversation with them on this.
Yep.
So that's where I'm at with that.
Yeah.
I will, I will get back to you on where we're at, uh, on that particular subject. And databases when I finish, um, having that conversation.
Yeah. Alright, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, any more questions for Sherry on the software transition? Okay, let's move on to the audit status. I think, uh, Rob already asked this question in our budget discussion, uh, anything to add or?
We were supposed to have an audit April thirtieth, because that was the extension was to April thirtieth. He was gonna take this last extension and then have something to us by then. Um, I have not.
There a but coming after that?
No, I haven't received anything either way, so.
It's got two days.
That he will be sending us drafts soon, I would hope. Um, I certainly can touch base with him tomorrow and send him an email. Ask him, where is he at? How's he doing? Does he need anything from us? Because he hasn't reached out and said that he did. Um, and then find out from there where we stand.
Okay. Any questions for, uh, Sherry or Eric on the audit? Okay, let's, the item eight, eight C is the motion to transfer the funds from the Treasurer's Office Software to Treework Fund. I kind of preempted that with, uh.
Yeah, she did that.
With the motion earlier. Um, so I think we move on to A D, Community Senior Centers, Community slash Senior Center Building Committee. We have an update there?
Uh, not for me.
Diane, you look like you're.
No updates, the way we kind of left it, we approved the funds to go out to, for the site survey, conceptual drawing. So it's kind of in Eric's court to get the bids and do that, and I know we're all wrapped up in budget and getting all that stuff done, so. Um, I don't think we're gonna see anything until this budget is put to bed and voted on it fast, so.
Okay.
You might, there, I might get the, I'd like to get the RFP out for the survey portion. Um, you know. Sooner rather than later, because I don't want to hold that up and that's not very expensive, um, but, you know. I am, I do have a few other things on my plate.
Okay. Alright, thanks Diane, thanks Eric. Nothing more on that. What's, uh, item eight E is the Veterans Monument Park Updates. Any, any update on that?
So we were able to, uh, bring in a, uh, well driller. Um, take the existing well, um, the upper well at the monument. Um, change out the pump in it to a higher capacity pump. And eventually pump through the, the major sediment issue that that well had. Um, it just basically required pumping the heck out of it for a long time. Um, so we're, we're out a total of about twenty-nine hundred dollars to rehabilitate that well. But it's a lot cheaper than, than drilling a new well and there's already an existing vault. So now that we know that, what we, the next thing we need to do is we need to figure out. You know, how we, uh, trench down to the field. Um, but, but that's progressing and we weren't planning on doing that till August. So we've got, you know, or July or August, so we're in good shape right now, I think, in terms of that project. Uh, Jerry, um, is raising a lot of money for, through the Buy a Brick Program, so I think there's. He's probably raised sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars, um, you know, at this point, which is great. And we're, you know, we're trucking along. That's it.
Okay, thanks Eric. Uh, last item under old businesses, eight F, the Building and Land Use Department Online Permitting System.
So we've discussed this a few times before. Um, so what we're doing is we are switching the building department over to an online permitting system. Um, and we're doing it by just straight passing the cost off to the people pulling permits by adding in a. Essentially a, an additional permit fee for each permit. And the software company will bill us monthly by the number of permits that the system has, has dealt with. So it's essentially cost neutral to the. Has dealt with. So it's essentially cost neutral to the down. I'm, hopefully we've gone back and forth on contract revisions a few times. I should have, I'm hoping next week I'll have a contract. Uh, to sign and we should be up and running. The goal is to be up and running with that about June one. And transition to online software for that.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Eric on that? Sounds like good progress. Okay, let's uh, let's move on our. Next agenda item is new business. Uh, the first item under new business is nine A. CIP Recommendation for the Building Alarm System. There's a lot of text here, Eric. You wanted some, I don't know, are you in a position to kind of give us a summary and for this?
Yeah, so basically we looked at a total of four vendors, of which we got good proposals out of three vendors. Um, and um, the Board of Selectmen asked, sent it to CIP and asked CIP. To rank the vendors based on, you know, their preferences. Um, CIP reviewed all the proposals and uh, felt that uh, FPT or Fire Protection Team. You know, was the best overall contractor for it, you know. Maybe a little bit more expensive upfront, but better long-term costs. The other real advantages to that is that the elementary school already uses FTP for. Uh, their inspection services. So eventually, you know, whether we uh. We, we eventually go to a combined bid that includes the testing for the school system. Um, cause that's the one thing that's not included in, in any of our quotes, is the testing portion. Um, this will accomplish what the town needs to do, which is to transition away from TN, the Talon Dispatch Center. Um, which will no longer be willing to do monitoring and change over to cellular monitoring. You know, the total upfront cost is gonna be somewhere, you know, north of twenty thousand dollars. And it depends on whether we include the Andover Museum or not. There's pros and cons. The CIP was not convinced uh, that the, the. Uh, service quote for that building was reasonable, so they approved it with, for everything other than that. And then asked me to go back to the vendor. Um, and if it gets through you, uh, guys and you actually. Uh, agree to spend the money, it will go to the Board of Selectmen. Um, and if they approve it, then it will get done.
So for, for the museum, you're talking about the burglar alarm or fire alarm or both?
Both, both. You know, right now there's a really half-baked uh, homeowner special system. That has like a single fire detector, um, and a motion sensor, I guess. Uh, but it doesn't really. There's never really any call to the authorities. Like I've gotten random text messages from the company saying that the burglar alarm has gone off in the building. Um, but. You know.
Right. So now I understand, but you're talking about omitting from their quote. Which part of that for the museum?
The whole thing, Mark. I, I think that what it was, was it was a combined. Bid for that building and Adrian in particular really. Thought that there, that that was a really incongruous part of their quote. Like that their, their quote for everything else made a lot of sense and the quote for that building was. He wanted to push back and have Eric go back to them and say, come on, you know.
Yeah.
You know, work with us here and see what they do.
I mean, so the, the, the big question for the Board of Finance is. Do you want to approve spending? Cause that will, you know, currently we have somewhere north of forty thousand dollars left. In the building fund. Um, and this is gonna tap. You know, uh. Twenty and twenty-five thousand of that to accomplish that. Um, and what I would suggest, since nobody's budgeting for annual testing. Um, or the monitoring, that probably what's gonna have to happen is we're gonna spend out of the twenty-five thousand dollars. The, the town will pay for all the upgrades and will pay for the monitoring, essentially the monitoring for a year for all the buildings. And then next year when we budget, cause then we'll have actual numbers for each. You know, we'll put it back on the library to pay for theirs and, you know, the school to pay for their monitoring, but for now. I'm, I'm saying that we just absorb it right out of that fund and be done with it.
Okay. The monitoring is not really capital, but.
No, it's not. And, you know, and you could try to push the monitoring. Out on something else. Um, and you know, it's gonna work out differently for each organization. Like for the town hall, our costs are actually gonna decrease for monitoring. Cause right now we're paying for two dedicated phone lines. And by the time we get rid of the seventy bucks a month for two dedicated phone lines and go to one cell receiver. You know, we're gonna be paying less. We're gonna be able to realize some savings. But like several, some of our facilities just use. Kind of like a pass-through phone line, so their alarm shares the same phone line. Like for instance, is the library. So the library is not gonna get rid of a phone line, so their costs are gonna go up. Um, so it's, we really gotta parse it out, you know, building by building. Um, but we're not, unfortunately, we had to come up with a budget long before we had any kind of reasonable numbers for this to assign that.
So you have a suggested motion here, which is to approve signing contracts with the Fire Protection Team for up to thirty thousand dollars. For the services.
I think, I thought I said twenty-five thousand.
That's not what your packet says.
Oops. No.
I think they got flip-flopped, Mark. Remember earlier, there was one that was twenty-five that needed to be thirty and.
Unless I sent you a wrong.
I'm looking at page thirty-three of the packet. The motion to approve has a number of thirty thousand.
Okay, I sent, uh, I sent to all the board members a.
Oh, yeah, I see you have twenty-five thousand and the more detailed motion and, and the email that you had sent. Okay, I see.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, you got a little discrepancy there. I, I just wanna say for the record that in this kinda situation where you're running comparative costs. Especially with the, the different, um, upfront versus, you know, ongoing running costs. It would've been really nice to have that in a matrix where you have each, each vendor and then, well, what's the upfront cost? What's the annual cost? Rather than having to tease it out of the text. And I, I don't know that that's you or the CIP, but just going forward, it's just makes easier to. You know, trying to sit here and figure it out on the fly.
Yeah, understood.
Fair point.
Anybody um, from the Board of Questions on this?
Hi, I'm just concerned, so if, if the, if the Old Town Hall isn't included, are we happy with what's there?
No, God, no. I mean, what's there doesn't work.
It, it sounds like what Eric's saying is that they're gonna go back and, and rebid that piece or push, push back on that, on that part of the quote. You're not implying that you're not gonna have, do something there that's in line with what you're doing for the rest of the town.
I mean, I would certainly, to me, um, you know, given what's stored in the Andover Historical Society at the museum. I would feel mo- more comfortable, certainly if it had a working, you know, fire alarm system, but. You know, it doesn't now. Um, but you know, honestly, a lot of our buildings don't really have functional systems right now, so. You know.
The insurance guy in me is going, la, 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 I can't hear you. Um, so. But no, the intention, yes, is to go and try to juke that bit a bit. Try to get them to come back, counter, counter offer it a little bit. And then hopefully we do get that included, right?
Yep, that's my goal.
Yep. Other questions? Okay, would anybody care to make a motion on this? We do have a proposed motion language in that email from Eric. There is a. Not quite as detailed motion in the, in the meeting packet with a thirty thousand dollar figure, but.
Sorry, Eric, how, how much do we need now? Is it twenty-five?
I, I think we can get away with twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
I mean, we could definitely get away with thirty thousand, but I think it's doable at twenty-five thousand.
Including the museum. Possibly, once you get a revised quote.
Yep.
So I guess, so the, as written, I moved, let me just look at six for a second. Do we wanna have anything in this motion that says, you know, pending further discussion with FTP about the museum? Or do we leave that out?
I think it is. Let's not muddy the waters. I mean, the first selectman's gonna take a crack at this. Eric's gonna, you know, I, I think I trust Eric to. Negotiate a reasonable contract. I think we need to get this done.
Okay.
Um, but that, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I hear you and I'm okay with that. So I'll move to authorize the town administrator. Uh, with concurrence to the Board of Selectmen to expend up to twenty-five thousand dollars from. Line item one hundred dash zero zero dash thirty-seven hundred dash oh five two. Building Maintenance Fund to hire Fire Protection Team. For fire alarm, cellular monitoring, installation, repair, monitoring and annual inspection services at the Andover Town Hall. AES, Library, Fire Department and Public Works.
And you wanna add the Old Town Hall Andover Museum if, can be handled under that budget number?
Oh, okay. So that's what I was kinda asking before. Um, sure. If it can be done under that number, yes, absolutely. We should add that. Correct. So maybe and or uh, the Old Town Hall slash Andover Museum. Correct.
Yeah, makes sense. Anybody wanna second that motion?
I'll second it.
With a second, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We have any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to our uh, next agenda item. That is item nine. B, Request for Funding for the Planning and Zoning Commission to Hire a Consultant to Develop an Affordable Housing Plan. In accordance with the new state law. So Eric, you've got a fairly complex. Well, maybe not you with. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, or maybe this, I guess it's the town of Andover. So you have a contract for preparation of the Affordable Housing Plan.
Right, so, so let me talk you through this and I'll tell you, um. You, you as a board may or may not be comfortable pushing this forward right now without it going to RFP. Um, your guidelines really say this should go to RFP first.
Yeah.
Um, but the Planning and Zoning Commission is essentially asking. Whether you would be willing to sole source it. Um, for kinda two reasons. One, um, the town has a really good history um, with Bill Warner. Um, in fact, Bill Warner and I wrote a grant that produced most of the data that's gonna go into the Affordable Housing Plan. Um, about six years ago, um, that we funded and then paid Bill to, uh. You know, to do the actual work for. And the reason why I think it's worth. Going with Bill on this one is because he wrote our last plan of development. Um, our last two plans of development and he did an affordable housing study. On the town, so he's probably in the best position. To put together, to put together now our, our state mandated plan. Um, and so on that basis, the, the. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission asked me whether I would ask you whether you would consider sole sourcing it. Or whether you want this to go to F, you know, to uh, an RFP.
And just, just a point of terminology, sole source basically means you're only gonna have one vendor do it, which is gonna be the effective. Thing here, but you're basically asking us to skip the bid process.
Correct.
Yeah, so uh, looking at the uh, at the budget for this, it's a total budget of six thousand nine hundred dollars. And you're saying that in your opinion and probably in the, I guess in the opinion of the Planning and Zoning Commission that they're. They don't expect it going out to bid is gonna result in a lower cost for this because the efficiencies that Bill Warner would have, having been familiar with the. Town and the data previously.
I mean, I don't think you're gonna get a good plan cheaper than that. I'm sure we can find somebody that will make us meet the minimum statutory guideline. For having a plan for them not reducing town funding uh, for less than that. But in terms of doing an actual affordable housing plan that makes sense for the town of Andover. I, I think he's gonna, that's gonna be a fairly competitive number. But without going to RFP, I can't tell you a hundred percent sure that that's the case. Just that, that's my gut feeling.
And to be clear, our guideline is five K, right? That we bid out if it's more than five?
Um, no, for services in this category, you have no minimum for your guideline. So, um, if we were paying him a buck, technically we would still be supposed to be sending this out to RFP. And I think at some point, we, the Board of Finance, once we're through with this year's budget. Really oughta take a look at your policies and start thinking about. Whether they make sense to you and what changes you would like. Because I think that a lot of those policies were put in, you know, under a very different regime. Um, that had some serious concerns about, you know, what a select board. Um, and administration was spending money on.
That's correct.
Right, and maybe you have more confidence in me or maybe you have less confidence in me, but anyway, the, 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 it's. It's really your choice whether you want to, because it's a policy. It's not a charter. Issue and it's not an ordinance, so it's your policy and you can decide to override it if you so choose. But I don't wanna arbitrarily override it, you know, that's, that decision is solely yours.
Right, kinda looking for a waiver here.
If we're gonna waive this, shouldn't we have this request in writing from the Planning and zoning and their logic set out of why they're recommending this to us? I know Eric gave us a summary, but we still don't have anything written. Or a written request or something. Not that I don't wanna, I don't wanna be bureaucratic, but.
I think you make a very good point, Diane. It would be. Helpful uh, for the purposes of the record, as much as anything else, is to provide some kinda summary. That says, look, we've looked at it, there's a rare reasons why. I mean, I think Eric summarized it well. And I'm not averse to doing this, but I do think Diane has a good point about future requests, especially to deviate from policy. If we have some type of summary, you know. Doesn't have to be as extensive as what we had for the alarm proposals, for example, which is, you know, well done and detailed, but. And some kinda summary about it would help.
Yeah, and, and let me tell you that I personally don't have any heartburn with sending it out to RFP. This was a request made to me and I said I would pass it on and maybe you guys would agree to it, maybe you wouldn't. You know, so I certainly haven't promised them that this is gonna fly, that's for sure.
I don't know if our charter allows us to go and just decide to go out of RFP. But we need to be careful here.
Yeah, there is some charter language around that, right? Boy, I was just looking at that, not long ago.
Think, yeah, we need some more guidance here.
Okay. I mean, if you want, we'll just send it to RFP. That's fine too.
But just, the, the problem, I don't even know if we can do this. I'd have to look at the charter first before I make a decision on it.
About going to RFP?
Skipping it.
Yeah, skipping this, skipping the RFP. Yeah, I think, I actually think David might be right here. Um, geez, and we should know that. Um, so that may be more of a charter-based question. So you reviewed that recently. I was a little surprised by some of that, but. So you reviewed that recently. I was a little surprised by some of that, but alright. Well, I think that, you know, my personal recommendations, like until we have that clarification, you know, we, we probably would not authorize it. I wouldn't be comfortable with that. Which means Eric can just go to RFP and you can, you know, we can make a decision based on that by the time the next meeting rolls around. Or we can wait for clarification. If it looks like it might be possible, then we could make that decision. But by the time we get to that point, it may, it may well be faster to submit an RFP, get it wrapped up in a couple of weeks. And of course, going to RP does not necessarily mean you have to choose the lowest bidder. You can choose the, there that's in the best interest of the town, which still allows you, if somebody came in a few hundred dollars less, but something was compliant, but we didn't feel that it was in the town's best interest to have data that might be questionable and analysis that's not as thorough, then we obviously choose the proposal that's in the best interest of the town.
Yep, not a problem.
Any further discussion on this? Alright, did anybody want to make a motion? I'll just note that if we want to hold off on this or, or let Eric do the normal RP process, then we would probably not make any motion. We don't want to make a negative motion. We only want to make a positive motion to do something different.
Yeah, I think we just table it for now.
Yeah, and Eric, of course, go out to RP and and we can also follow up on that afterwards.
Okay, I'll touch base with the, the chairman of the commission.
Alright, I believe that takes us to gotta roll back up to see it. New business item nine C, motion to appoint Sherry Holmes, town treasurer in accordance with the town charter. Eric, do you want to comment on this?
Yeah, so, so I'm a little screwed up on this. I had it in my notes that the board of finance had to officially appoint the town treasurer. It's actually technically the board of selectmen has to. So what I would say is motion to recommend that the board of selectmen avoid Sherry Holmes as town treasurer to conform with Charter section seven oh two I.
Administrative positions. Yeah, just being said, board of selectmen shall appoint the treasurer, shall have all the powers and duties imposed and referred by Connecticut general statutes, blah, blah, blah. Okay, competitive, blah, blah, blah. Okay. Alright.
Problem is they technically haven't. So you could ignore this too and just leave it in there, but, or you can recommend that they do that.
I'll leave that to the board. You know, there's nothing requiring our recommendation or approval on this in the charter. So we really, it's, it's, it's a moot point, other than we put our seal of imprimatur on there approving this. So it's really, really up to the board. I don't think it's a bad thing to necessarily have done that, but we don't need to. Anyone on the board want to make a motion, one way or the other? Well, usually we'd do the other unless you want to.
Sure, I'll move that we recommend that we appoint Sherry treasurer.
Okay, so Rob moves that we recommended the board of selectmen appoint Sherry treasurer per the requirements in the charter. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Louis seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any abstentions? Alright, looks like you're in our good graces so far, Sherry. Thank you. Motion passes.
I know. Thank you very much. I appreciate this.
I'm counting on you for the grant, grant money, Sherry.
I'm working on it right now. I'm serious. I'm working on it right now.
Okay, this takes us to item ninety, which is a school and state funding project. This is really relevant to the educational cost sharing we just talked about, right, Eric?
Yeah, I'm actually not clear what that is. I don't think I put it in the, on the agenda. I'm not sure what that's relative to, to be perfectly honest with you.
Well, it's kind of a summary, I think, of the proposed budget from the appropriations committee. And the, it talks about the educational cost sharing formula changes. I think it's just a review of that.
Right.
You know, it's, it's the stuff that you just, you displayed up there is earlier about the, the town by town differential from the governor's budget. And we have pretty much already gone through this. And if anybody's curious about the, I think somebody asked about the, I think it was, it may have been Louise about how it was calculated. I think there is at least an overview in there about the weighting factors, how they changed. It's in the packet.
Right.
Somebody have any more questions on that? I think we went, talked through it. Certainly the information is in there in the, in the packet. Okay, hearing no more questions or discussion. That takes us actually to agenda item number ten, which is the approval of meeting minutes. We have four different meeting minutes that are up for approval. Ten A is Wednesday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting minutes. So anybody like to motion to approve those? Anyone?
Motions.
Yeah, probably. So we could probably do them all. The other, the other three are Wednesday, March thirty-first, special budget workshop minutes, the Wednesday, April seventh, twenty twenty-one, special meeting budget workshop minutes. And Wednesday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, town budget public hearing minutes.
I'll make a motion.
To approve all those minutes?
To approve all four of them.
Okay, anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Hey, Dave seconds, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, motion passes. Somewhere between one and two in the morning in that last budget hearing. So I'm not sure that only there, I contemplated abstaining, but I think I'm probably okay. Alright, agenda item number eleven is the liaison reports. Do we have any reports from our liaison members?
Well, we already kind of talked about CI, what happened at CIP. I don't have a lot to add. I, I mostly just listened to others give their expertise. And it was really mostly about that alarm project, so. I don't really have much to add there.
That's good. Okay. Diane, you kind of talked a little bit about the community senior center already. Anything to add there? Are we good? I'm just saying no. Okay. Alright, I think that is the summary of our, some of our liaison opportunities there. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number twelve, which is board open discussion. Is any of the board members, do any of the board members have anything they'd like to bring before the board? We have talked about already. Okay, hearing nothing, I guess we move on to item thirteen, which is our public speak opportunity. Amanda, do I go ahead and poll the participants and see who would like to add any comments?
Sure, okay. We have a couple of people on here. Joanne have, Joanne Hebert.
Number first, I just have one. Ultimately, I appreciated all the discussion on that grant and whether or not to add it. And I believe you made the right decision. Just wanted to bring forth an idea that I didn't hear, just in case you guys have to. Presented by all of you. Could think about that grant and if, you know, once, once Sherry and Eric do their.
We're losing you here.
Time hearing you.
We, we, it's really breaking up.
Let me try that. Any better?
Much better.
Oh, yay. I found the connection. I'll be quick, really. Again, I was just saying, I appreciated all the discussion on.
We're losing you again, Joanne.
Sorry, it's not working.
No comment. I'll send it in. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good idea.
Okay, next up we have Kathy Plazey and Mike Plazey.
I just want to say thank you very, very much to the board of finance. I think they did a great job. I know you did the best you could and I thank you very much for your dedication.
Well, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Val Bruno?
I am all set. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And I believe we're all set.
Okay, great. Alright, next agenda item would be adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Diane motions to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Rob seconds. Thank you. Any discussion? Bueller? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Sounds like none, motion passes. I want to thank everybody. Work's not done, but we would the ball forward a little bit more. So, thank you, everybody. Stay well and we'll see you next Thursday. Reminder, that meeting is in person.
Yes.
Right, so I don't think there's any provision for remote participation. Is that correct, Eric?
That is correct.
So seven PM, are we in the, are we in the gym or are we in the town community?
Yeah, will peop- will people be able to view it? Without participating?
Like a follow-up?
No?
Don't know the answer to that one.
Planning on recording it at this point.
Are you planning, Eric, on doing it live where you would need the ViewSonic for people to view it live on Zoom?
We're not, because there's no practical way for them to vote anyway. So it doesn't really matter.
No, we need to just set it up. That's all.
Yeah, no.
If someone would want to view it later, will there be like, there'll be any notes, any minutes?
You know, unless the CVC is there to record it, which I'm not sure about the plan there. I mean, it's.
We could record, you know, we have the, the recorders. We can certainly record the thing and upload it. It's certainly within our power. The question is, what purpose are we serving since, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's really.
Documenting what happened, I guess, is.
But the town clerk's office is doing the minutes.
So the minute, the minutes will be there. That's really the way that traditionally the results of meetings have been recorded and, and legally posted, so.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, everybody.